To the meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board, and please stand and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and right off the top, I'd like to thank you for the, all the stuff sitting up here. Very cool. Thank you very much to everybody who's responsible. Okay, we have a couple items on our consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Student reps Macy and Acacia. Good to see you guys.
So before we start, we would like to thank you guys for everything you do as individuals and a group for the school district to make it better.
Thank you. Thank you for the gifts. This is awesome.
I'm looking for this as well.
It's really fun.
High school was pretty cool. So anyway, my name is Macy and I do the clubs and activities at Silverton High School. So first off, ASB, run by Johnny Pharoah, we're preparing for all of our spring events, such as our Queen of Hearts Dance, which will be held February 7th at the high school. We are also in the process of starting our Mr. S.H.S., which is a fundraiser we do each year that supports Medical Teams International. And then soon after that, we have our Prom and Spirit Week, which we are now creating committees and chairs for. Next, we have Key Club, run by Megan Miller. They are in the process of starting fundraising for their annual district convention, or DECON, held in Seattle in March. And some other fundraising will include the money that they've already raised from Christmas Caroling at Roth's before winter break started, and the donations made by the Quans Club of Silverton. National Artist Society is also in the process of meeting with officers and planning upcoming events. And then Theater, run by Mr. Osterhout, was very successful in its showings of Steel Magnolias, which was student-directed by Savannah Sheeley, as well as Arms in the Land, directed by Chris Mathi. So upcoming events for Theater in the spring are Susical the Musical, which will be the music department and the theater department together with the help of Mr. Patrick and Mrs. Kircher. And auditions start soon, February. And Annie Bukhite is hosting a Drama Night for her senior project this Friday at 7:00 PM in The Black Box, and admission is $2. Future Business Leaders of America has a board meeting on Wednesday morning where board members will meet and plan upcoming events. And then Regionals are early February, and board members have also been preparing for that. And then Interact Club is planning for upcoming events and projects as well. FFA just went to state for ag sales, and recently they received first place in districts and state degrees. They have their monthly meeting tonight at 6:30, and this month they are practicing parliamentary procedures. Red Cross Club, run by Kristen Barnes, students are taking training for disaster response in case a disaster happens here in Oregon. And they're also participating in elementary preparedness. So some of the high school students will visit the elementary schools and teach them about safety with the goal and motto of be prepared, not scared. Speech just participated in a tournament hosted at Pacific University this last weekend, and Reagan Sheeley placed sixth junior ADS after dinner speech, and Julie Golin placed third and fourth in radio and prose. And then several team members who semifinaled were Megan Knox, Melie Kazell, and Kealan Wall. Next, Construction Auto Club, they are working on individual projects and learning new techniques. And then Band and Choir, since we just finished our winter season, we're starting to learn new music, reviewing some of our old music, and working on techniques and sight reading. So kind of in the in-between stage here, getting ready for the spring. Any questions? I know that was a lot.
Just a comment, I thought the music program for Christmas was outstanding.
Oh, cool. I'll let the screen know. We all worked really hard, so thank you.
Okay, so for sports. For boys' basketball, so far this season, the boys' basketball team has won five games and lost three. They have a game at West Albany on Tuesday at 7:00 PM and a home game on Friday against Crescent Valley at 7:00 PM. Then for girls' basketball, they've won four games and lost five so far. They have a home game against West Albany on Wednesday at 7:00, and they will play Crescent Valley on Friday at 7:00 PM at Crescent Valley. Wrestling, they have a tournament in Redmond this weekend. It's a two-day tournament, and so they're preparing for that. And the swim team has over 60 kids this year. They are mostly like new swimmers, and so they've just been working on improving. The coaches are improving. And dance is preparing for state competitions, and their first round of state competitions will take place on February 1st.
Cool. Questions? What musical did you say they were doing in the spring?
Susical the Musical.
Susical the Musical.
It's gonna be lots of fun, so stay in tune for dates.
That'll be neat to see. That'll be fun.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good report tonight.
Have a good night.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to our first audience with visitors. Would anyone like to address the board tonight? There'll be another opportunity later, but would anybody like to, right now? Okay, moving on to discussion items. Revisions to policies. We'll go through one of these one at a time. BBB, board elections. Any issues with this one so far? This is a first reading on all these. Okay. BBFA, board member ethics and conflicts of interest. Nothing? BBFB, board member ethics and nepotism. Nothing on that one? EBBB, injury slash illness reports.
David, can we just back up real quickly to board member ethics and nepotism? I didn't understand the wording of paragraph two, number two. It says the spouse of the board member's parent. Step-parent, child, sibling, step-sibling, son-in-law, or daughter-in-law. The spouse of the board member's parent.
I assume this is taken right out of state statute.
I guess it'd be a step-parent or a parent.
It would be like a grandparent. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I just want...
Well, it'd be somebody who's...
We need to clarify this.
Andy?
I can look into that. It's peculiar wording, isn't it?
It is, it's really.
But I think it's in reference to the...
Is there a colonist?
Step-parent. You know, if it's not paternal father, maternal mother, if it was a premarital state, for instance, that it would pertain to a step-parent. I can, we look into that and should clarify that, David. If we could have some clarity, I think that would be useful.
Well, the first, the number one there says the board member's spouse, parent, you know, and on down the line. And then number two is the spouse of a board member's parent. It could be, you know, if you had, if you had a 30-year-old board member, they could still have a parent who was a teacher in the district. Is that what it's referring to?
Is that what we're after?
I'm not certain.
It just seems like it's phrased in such a way that...
Yeah, also, is it a step-parent? I don't know.
It doesn't provide a lot of clarity.
Sure. I'll contact OSBA and clarify.
Business for the OSBA. Thank you. You're welcome.
Anything else on that one? Okay, entry illness reports, EBBB. EBCB, emergency drills.
Tim, I have one on that second paragraph. The last sentence, it says which shall include tsunami procedures in a coastal zone. Why do we even need that in there?
That's, it doesn't apply to us, but I did confirm that that's stated in the revisions to the law, or so if you're in a coastal area. A tsunami was actually referenced multiple times in bracketed form throughout this policy, and we removed all of those other, all of the other references other than the one that said if you're in a coastal zone.
I know we're not in a coastal zone, so...
Because it relates to state law, we should...
It may not be a real big deal. I mean, we're not in a tsunami.
No, it doesn't apply.
Zone.
Unless it's the parent of a tsunami.
Nice. Nice. Spouse.
Which could be a hurricane or something that's caused by the tsunami.
We can remove that.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, anything else on this one? Okay, IKF, graduation requirements. Anything on this one? Okay, we're good. We can revisit these next month and look at them one more time if there's anything that comes up. Consideration of date change to March 24th board work session. I guess our March work session is scheduled on the first Monday of spring break, so if that's a conflict with people, I would probably like to see it moved, just in case we decide that, I mean, I don't have any plans right now.
I would be there.
I'd like to move it.
Okay. What would you prefer, the week before?
If I can interject here, we could do it the week before, however, there are five weeks in the month of March, five Mondays in the month of March. So if you were to move it to the 31st, the following Monday, you would still have two weeks between the work session and your April regular session.
Hey, I would propose we do it the 31st. Is that okay with everybody? Okay?
Do we need a motion or just...
No, I don't think we do that.
Denise will update the minutes and, of course, the information on the website.
Yeah. And while we're talking about work sessions, remember our one this month in two weeks is gonna start at 5 o'clock, and 5 to 8 or whenever after that. So it's when we're gonna be getting the report from the...
Or whatever.
Yeah. I don't believe it'll be done by 8, but it's when we're gonna be getting the report from the community engagement process, from the consultants we've had, so. Anybody who wants to come listen, you're welcome. Okay, any other items for discussion tonight? Okay, administrative staff reports. Andy, you have a whole list there.
Yeah, and I think all of these are brief, but one of them is related to that, just the visioning update. I'm pleased to have had your two consultants in the district for two days last week as part of their process and timeline. One of the elements was to visit each of the schools within the district, spend a little time getting a sense of each one of the buildings, a little bit more about the geography, and of course, speaking with teachers and very specifically the administrators, principals within each building, which all occurred. So from my standpoint, I think it was a very effective and useful use of time, especially their time, in order to help create some direction for you as you put your strategic plan together as we move into the spring. Related to the public engagement, I have seen some of the preliminary participation results, and I'm very pleased. I think I shared with you at one point that we had about 200 participants just under with the community forums and the focus groups, but we've also received participation summaries for the public engagement, electronic engagement process with use of ThoughtStream, and that come, was about 980 participants. So your public input related to your visioning and planning process at this point is over 1,000 people from within your community, which I think is a powerful statement, not only a reflection of the interests of the public, but I think of some powerful direction for you as you move ahead with this process. So I'm very pleased, and I think my sense is you are as well. Website updates and communication plan, if you recall, developing a communication plan is one of my professional goals for this year, but it's also sort of, you know, web within your district goals for this year. And one of those is the updates to the school and district websites. We are offering on a platform, that was the original platform essentially, that was developed over 10 years ago. And while it's still useful and still effective, I think it needs a shot in the arm to really meet the needs of 2014. So if you're interested in seeing what the draft website will look like, we do have the Silverton High School website just about ready to release. If you go to the Silverton High School website, you'll see a button that says click here to see the new high school website. It'll be the same format used at the district level and also at the other schools within the district. Derek McElfresh of Silverton High School has assumed some district-level technology responsibilities, and he's put really quite a nice effort into gaining some information from folks and then creating this draft. And it still is in draft form. There's a place for you to click as well to provide some public input about what some of those characteristics and features are that you'd like to have in a district website, as well as the public. Freezing weather damage updates, as all of you are aware, we had two schools experience some damage as a result of freezing weather in the middle of December. Scotts Mills, much more than Silvercrest, but both schools were damaged in some capacity. Each has been repaired. They are operational. Scotts Mills, and you'll hear more about this tonight, I'm certain, with Marilyn's report, but Scotts Mills, two classrooms which were damaged. One is essentially back to operation, maybe Helen will wanna chime in at some point tonight to be what essentially back to operation means, because I know you're still putting things on the walls. But the computer lab, which was essentially destroyed, is being converted into, I think, a very, very good and effective use for many years to come, which Marilyn will explain in a little while. But each of those projects, both Scotts Mills and Silvercrest, have been completed or are nearly completed, and I'm pleased. We have revisited what could have potentially averted any of the damage to those, and just in conversation with Pete Paritas and Helen Fetch, I think the lengthy nature of the deep freeze is really what got us. I mean, I think a freeze for two, three, four, maybe even five days of, let's say, upper twenties or something, are very manageable for these schools. But eight, seven, eight, nine degrees over the course of a few days was really what it took, and that's unfortunately what we experienced. We have increased insulation. We have created some attention to replacing some plumbing that allows for a little bit more tolerance of freezing conditions, so at least those elements have been upgraded to 2014 standards.
With costs all covered by insurance?
All except they're deductible, which is $25,000.
Okay, questions for Andy? Okay, Scott, financial report and the conversion to Infinite Visions.
Kind of exciting for you to get to sit up here. Do we have a way to turn these lights off?
Up by the door.
Eric, someone?
Well, we'll just go over the financial report first and then we'll move into the world. Yeah, I think that's great. Can you guys see that okay?
Yeah, that's good.
All right. With the financial report, there's nothing real major that jumps out. The budget, the cash basis report looks good. We're about 33% of, or I mean, 33% of our revenue is lost, so we've done 67% of our revenue has come in. And then our expenditures is about 67%, so that's right on track. We're in a good positive cash flow situation there on all expenditures and revenue for all funds. The balance sheet on page two, things are looking good there. You'll notice that there's no negative numbers there. Again, we talked about last month, house sometimes just by the end of the month. If we have some expenditures that are coming in, the balance sheet is not on a cash basis. Occasionally, there's checks that are sitting on the desk that go out, and that puts some of those numbers in a negative spot, but they're not in that spot now. The summary by fund, last month, we also talked about that negative $59,000 number, and that is in federal grants and projects. Some of those grants that we manage in that 200 fund, we expended first, and then the money comes in later. So there's nothing to be too concerned about there. On the expenditure summary on page three, you'll see the charter school payments. Both of the charter schools have spent more money to date, simply that's kind of par for the course for them, so they're gonna be at 45, 46% while the rest is at 65%.
Well, again, Prudential seems to be spinning ahead of the curve.
Prudential, on this particular, yeah, they do, they are spinning ahead of the curve in the not subject to carryover retention in last month or two months ago. You had asked me about the, and I responded last month on the bottom amount, which they are also spinning ahead of the curve. That was because they had a big technology purchase. They bought iPads. I don't know if that's affecting the amount. It would not affect the amount not subject to carryover retention. However, I'll have to check into that before.
If you could.
Yeah, I certainly don't mind doing that. And one other thing I'm going to check into, and I didn't notice it until tonight, I noticed that Victor Point, looks like they're really getting close to spending most of their money for the retention. You can see that they have about 30% left out of that, so I'm gonna have to follow up with you guys on both of those numbers. And then the cash flow report on the back sheet, the backside. The thing to notice on the cash flow report, the very top part, of course, is all the revenues, and then that's kind of an aggregate down below of all the expenditures, but you'll notice that the property tax revenues come in. You receive a majority of that in November, some of that comes in, those late payments come in in December, and we'll see other hits for those folks that pay on a third, third, third basis. So that's put us back into a real nice positive cash flow stream in the general fund. Okay, are there any questions on this? I'm pretty excited to share with you a little bit about Infinite Visions. The Infinite Visions is an accounting and human resources management application, and it's a suite, it's a software suite, really, it's an accounting software suite. When I was interviewed, I think I went and asked him one time about QuickBooks, because I was a QuickBooks consultant for a number of years before I got into school district finance. And that type of software isn't really appropriate for an organization as large as ours, and we just can't handle that. What most school districts in Oregon are working on right now is this software suite called Infinite Visions. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about it. We're looking at transitioning into it, starting July 1st of next year. But the process of getting it set up has to happen now, so I'm gonna go fairly quickly through this, but there'll be some time for some questions later. Essentially what it is, is an integrated suite of human resources and accounting. Right now, we don't have a human resources software solution at all. A lot of that's done by hand. It's used by 125 school districts and ESDs in Oregon. By far, it's the most popular software suite in Oregon. A lot of those smaller school districts, some are actually using QuickBooks, some are using some hand methods, and some are using the system that we're using now, it's called OSAS. And Infinite Visions is aligned with the state on reports and the Oregon Division Initiative, which is important for technology. Some of the benefits to us are, we really need to, we're gonna see some real streamlined workflow and increased efficiencies. We've done some studies since we've been here, or since I've been here at the school district, and it's, we really need to do improvements in this area. We have some work that's being done, I would call it, for lack of a better term, just redundancies in areas of deposits at the high school, for instance. Two or three people do the same type of thing over and over again. I mean, just, we don't have any time to be able to do that anymore. Our paperwork reduction is really key for us, and I think Tim's been over in my office sometimes in these stacks of papers and checks that are literally in inches. Improved reporting, that's a big thing for me personally, and financial reports are like the reports that you guys get here, but also we do a lot of reporting for both the state and federal. And then I was, I talk often with the principals, and we were just having a chat this evening about building level reports. It would be really nice for the building principals to be able to see their financial picture out of push of a button. Right now, it's a little difficult. Some of them can get some of that information out of there, but it's not really very easy for them to understand. I believe that it's my job and our job as a business office to make sure that the folks that need that information have that information on a regular basis. With Infinite Visions, they'll set this up, they can push a button, see exactly where the funds are. And then grants, one of the things about a lot of our grants that we get, and we continue to get, we're starting to search out and go after more and more grants, because it's a good source of revenue, is that they're multi-year grants, and so they go over the fiscal year. And so our current system is really, it's really difficult to track a current that has revenue and expenditures on a multi-year basis. We'd also see some improved financial controls, which is really important for myself, and we've been talking, we've had a couple conversations with auditors about that. Electronic budget creation, monitoring, we're just getting started with the budget process right now. Again, the human resources integration, we've never really had any kind of integration with human resources, with the exception of, you know, face-to-face kind of communication on payroll. And then there's full help desk and support training. This is our current system, it's called OSAS, and it's developed by the South Coast Education Service District, which is a small ESD down on the coast, Coos Bay. Really, the technology is kind of an outdated technology, and if you'd see it, it's an AS400, we call it green screen, so there's nothing like cutting and pasting. You know, that just doesn't exist. Everything's done with function keys and slash commands. And there's not a lot of, there's very limited training materials, and in some areas, there's no training materials whatsoever. We see some challenges in this area when we have staffing turnover. We don't have a lot of turnover in this district, as you know, but we did turn over our bookkeeper at the high school, for instance, and there really wasn't an opportunity for her to get any kind of training at all in the system, and it's a challenging system. Staffing challenges that I'm referring to here actually belong to the South Coast ESD. They have a three-person system they're setting up that runs the OSAS system, and they actually programmed the computers to run OSAS. One of those individuals passed away suddenly in November, and they've been having a hard time finding somebody to replace her. And then the lead architect of the whole system is also retiring. He's only working half-time right now, but they've been doing a national search to try to replace him. So the concern I have there obviously is, you know, folks that are up to speed on how to make the accounting system work are pretty rare and hard to come by, and I'm really concerned about that for them in the future. We have, for whatever reason, decided years ago when we converted the OSAS system, to not use the general ledger in the system, because there was some concerns about managing cash. And without going into a lot of detail about that, I can tell you that the reconciliations, bank reconciliations that we do, and cash that we manage, is done manually on spreadsheets. It's working, and there's no, there's no concern with the way we check it, but it's not a very strong financial control, because, you know, essentially, you're doing the bank reconciliations essentially by hand, and so if a person gets it wrong, there's an opportunity to move, you know, to kind of hide some numbers or that kind of stuff. It's never happened, but, you know, just because it's done by hand and there's nobody else that can recreate that in a computer system, that's a concern for me personally from a financial control standpoint. It's date, not entry-driven, it's been difficult to find certain transactions. When I look at this and I say that I have to get back to you on why Victor Point's got, has spent a lot more of their money, and we have to go back and do a lot of the work on that. And then finally, a can except outside now. So the decision was made to really look into this, and so we identified this need in summer times. And then when we, our auditors came and audited last year's books, they really recommended that we consider a different accounting system. They were concerned about the size of our district, the amount of transactions that we're doing, the number of funds that we're managing, and also a new person coming in. They thought that a system like a vision system or another type, a similar system, would be good for us. So we received a pricing proposal in September. We met with the technology folks, our technology folks, because the one thing I didn't wanna do was really overburden them, and they took it to a statewide meeting, they talked to some of their peers that use it, and they came back and they said, this looks like a great system, and you're not gonna have a lot of work to have to do. So we invited Tyler Technology, the owner of the system, out to, for a presentation. They came out and gave a presentation, invited all of the building secretaries, all the principals, the district office staff, out to certain portions of this, or all of the entire presentation. It took most of the day. And in that, we got, we did an evaluation afterwards, and we asked folks to rank on a scale of 1 to 10, 1 being I don't wanna change systems, to 10, we need to change systems tomorrow, what they thought. And the building secretaries came back with an average score of 7. The district office was at 8.6, I almost said 8.7, and the admins and the principals were 7.5. So there's some pretty positive change for, support for system change. So there's some pretty positive change for, support for system change. Then we met with the principals and the admin team in November. We got a pricing analysis, and we did some more pencil sharpening in December, and then the administrative decision happened in December. So this is our implementation plan. In January, we hope to have our implementation meetings with Tyler Technology and do some of that data conversion. We're gonna do some payroll training. To answer one of your questions, we're starting budgeting now, actually. And while Jan's still working, thank goodness, we're gonna do a dual-path budget process. We're gonna use the same system we've always done for budgeting on this side, and then I'm gonna do the, kind of start creating some of that data that's coming out of Jan's system into Visions. And so when we go live on July 1, we'll have all the budget already built in Visions. Mostly from my standpoint, but then I watch how Jan does it, so I understand the budget philosophy. Everybody has a different philosophy, how you go about doing this. I think this is gonna be a nice system, and then that way, I can learn from Jan as to how it's been done in the past, and put the data in right away, so when we're all there you go, July 1. Lots of training types of things going on in the following months, but June, we'll be testing payroll and general ledger, and we'll roll over to the new fiscal year, but July 1, we'll go live again. And then we'll do some more training on reporting. Now, I'm sure you're interested in the cost comparisons. The cost comparison is, Visions is going to cost more upfront, mostly because of the amount of money that is required for training and setting. And one of, there's two things we've done to save some money, actually, three. One, we've got a couple of different quotes, we've got a quote from Infinite Visions, Tyler Technology's company itself. Then we got a quote from LBL, and Betlink in the ESD. And then, and then we also priced out OSAS. And so we have those quotes that we have, we know what those costs are gonna be. And then the North Sandy Am School District, or the neighbors to the south, are also going through a Visions conversion, they're converting to Visions on the same day, or go live day of July 1. And so we've worked out a deal where we can split the cost, or get a discount on the cost of the training, because the trainers come out, they work with our staff one-on-one on certain things, and it's gonna be very helpful for us, but we'll be able to do a lot of that here, and then down in North Sandy Am School District as well, and hopefully save some money there. So you'll see the first year, the current year costs, we have some costs of about $11,000 that we expect to pay this month, or this year. And then OSAS, the current system, costs us about $32,000 a year with a 1.5% increase on an annual basis. So the next section here is 2 through 6. You can see the higher number of visions is, you know, in the 43s, 44s, 45s, whereas OSAS is in the 32s and 33s. That cost difference is how we're spreading out the cost of training over a period of five years. We're able to do that through a kind of a leasing arrangement that we're doing to help preserve our cash flow, I think it's important to do that. And then year seven on, you can see the annual cost to Visions is about what we're going to end up seeing on a regular basis, somewhere in the $20,000 compared to $34,000. So over a 10-year average, by 10 years, our payback, our average cost over 10 years is $32,000 a year for Visions, and $34,000 for OSAS. So finally, we're gonna have some improved capabilities, I'm really excited about that. Increased efficiencies and controls, we're very significant increases in efficiency right now. This is a good timing for us, simply because we can change, we can save on some training costs, and frankly, changing on our terms. If, if our current accounting system, South Coast, has some difficulties in staffing, if they have a hard time supporting the product that we currently have, we're gonna beat it where it hurts, we have to kind of quit on somebody else's terms, so I think we need to do this while we can. And then, again, this is a preferred platform statewide, and so it's a long-term solution for us. The reality is, is that, you know, if we need a new payroll person sometime in the future, or a new accounts payable person, or I plan to retire, but maybe you need a new business manager, most of those folks are gonna have Visions experience, and so they're gonna be able to come in and kind of run with the ball a little faster than, say, like I have, in terms of, I mean, I've struggled a little bit with the OSAS system, and it's been a little flunky for me, so I think, I think it's a good, good program for us, and I'm glad we're moving down there. So that's it, I tried to be fast to avoid paying for dumbness, but are there any questions or comments?
Questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott, that was real informative.
Appreciate the update.
Makes a great deal of sense, so.
Yeah, I think it'll be a good, I think it's a good move.
I think we're gonna live it a lot, actually.
Sounds like a very good move, so.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Maryland Ann and Scott's Mills and District Homeless Program.
Looks like you have a lot of work there.
I got a lot of work.
A lot of correcting to do tonight?
I have a lot of correcting to do tonight.
Yeah, so do I.
We're from Scott's Mills School, my name's Helen Plough, and I teach 7th and 8th grade there.
And I'm Danielle Andres, and I teach 4th and 5th grade.
Our vision is to move towards a paperless classroom, and we'd like to do a little demo of that, how we use it in our classroom right now. You have iPads in front of you, I'm gonna go ahead and get this set up, if you grab your iPads, and we have helpers, Mrs. Ann, if you've not used an iPad before, Mrs. Ann can help, and I'll try to demonstrate as best as I can. Oh. And I get this up, but guess what? Technology, you know how it is. I know, yeah, there you go. You should, actually, I think you're into the Showbie program, some of you are on your desktop. I use an app called Showbie, and on, some of you, I think, are already logged into it, some of you will find it on your desktop screen. It's a way for the students and I to exchange paperwork and assignments, and I'm gonna go ahead and log into it as the teacher, and if you would tap on that Showbie, if you haven't already on your desktop, tap on that Showbie yellow box, and you should have a screen that looks somewhat like mine, is there anybody who doesn't?
Yes, this is.
Just tap on the, you're into it, your screen looks very similar to mine. What I've done, my classroom, I created a reading class, and a math class, but I've also created a class for you, my students, okay, and it's a board class, and this is how it works. You'll see, right up here in black, it says board, and it says one assign, if you would tap on that, up should come something called Reader's Response, and this is something I use in my literature class. If you tap on that, you're gonna see something called Board Presentation, and if you'll tap on that, you'll get to your assignment. It should look similar to what I have up here. If you have any trouble with that, just raise your hand. So this is a typical assignment I might use in my room. I'd have the kids, I have an article here that is on iPad use in the classroom, and I would ask them to read it, I'd ask them to annotate or mark up the text, I'd ask them to explain their thinking with the Post-it tool, which I'll show you, and then I'd have them do some writing afterwards, based on a question. Now, what I want you to do, you'll see that I created a PDF document, it says iPads in the Classroom article, if you'll tap on that, the article should come up. Okay, you have, don't worry, you don't have to do that assignment, if you guys are sure as well. I'm not annotating the text or writing after me. I'll do something a lot similar, a lot simpler. Now, there's four tools at the top. The four arrows allow you to take your fingers and make your text larger if you need to, if it's hard for you to read. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, as well. Makes it a little easier to annotate and mark up the text, so get it to a nice size. And then the next tool you see at the top to the middle is a pen, and if you tap on that, it turns blue, that allows you to mark up the text. For example, if I look at number one, actually, this article's about, whoops, iPads, and I was reading, the first reason, said something about kindergarten students, and how their, I, their literacy tests, literacy tests, they scored much higher than those that didn't use iPads. Well, I found that interesting, and I'm gonna underline that with my pen. If I make them state the next tools for that, it's an eraser, I can tap on that eraser, go back through, and get rid of that.
That's cool.
I'm gonna go back to the pen and re-highlight that, so that I can show you the Post-it.
Oh, nice.
Now, of course, just underlining things is not enough in my classroom, you have to explain why you underlined it, what it was making you think, and the final tool at the top, it's a Post-it, it's a little square with the lines, and if you tap on that, turns blue. Now that allows me to record my thinking about what I annotated, so I'm just gonna tap nearby where I annotated the text with the red line, and when I tap there, up came a Post-it note.
This is cool.
Let me know if I'm going too fast. And now, with that Post-it note, I can, my keyboard pops up.
It's not your mom's school.
And I might say something like, "This made me wonder."
This is great.
Whatever. Then I save it, and now that's there on the side of the paper. If I touch the little yellow icon, I can move it over to the other side if I want to. When I'm finished annotating text and recording my thoughts, I can go to the top left, and I can click Done. Okay, and then it will be in my file. Well, actually, you can annotate a piece of text if you'd like, but if you'd like to do something similar, simpler, just go back to your pen, and somewhere on your paper, would you write your name?
It just lost me.
Or wrote on it.
Okay, so you're on the text, oh, you did a perfect job, that's fine, that'll do. I didn't know if you would want to annotate text, I thought it might be a tough read or whatever. Make some kind of mark on the paper.
Somebody cheated, I'm like, I did not do this. I didn't do all of this.
The reason that they're showing up on all of them is because we haven't, we didn't create individual folders. If we had individual folders for each one of you, then each kid would have their own paper and their own piece of annotated text that would come back to me. But we didn't want to have to go through username and passwords for each one of you, want to keep it short. So anyway, I tap Done, I'm in as the teacher. Now, if I go in and type, tap on the iPads in the Classroom article, I should see your annotations, so I'll do that. Now, the nice feature of this is I have this kid's information, I can tap Done, and I can go in and I can make text comments, but the greatest feature for me is when I tap on the little plus sign up in the corner, and the kids can do this as well, is that I have all, I have access to all kinds of things, and I love the voice note, because sometimes I just get tired of writing on papers. And so what I can go in and say, "Tim, beautiful handwriting today," or whatever it is I want to say, tap it, save it. It's a little slow, I might have lost my connection. But anyway, that shows up in the student's file, my boy, and usually, I comment on, you know, what they've annotated and what their thoughts were about it, maybe get them to think a little deeper. You can also write on it, you see my voice note now, but it appears, and the student can go back into his folder the next day, or whenever, and he can listen to that voice comment, go back into his piece, make some changes to it, and then resubmit it to me. Okay, and I'll show you a quick version of that, I'm just gonna go back into Reading, Reading Connections, I'll go into Chase's file, I had an art, I had an assignment in here where they had to make some connections early on in the year, and talk about how it deepened their understanding, and this, these were, this is what Chase submitted to me, so Reading Connections about a book called Deeper Reading by Kelly Gallagher, what the connections were, how it led to deeper understanding, and then I went back in, and I made my statements in a different color, so they could see their point value, and then they could go and respond to that as well. It's called Showbie, the kids seem to really like it so far, I like it, because it goes from that to this, and the same thing for the kids. I mean, here's their note.
I like that.
Yeah, it's great, for kids especially in trouble with organization. So that's my spiel about paperless classrooms, I'm gonna turn it over to Danielle.
I got a question, do you do much typing on this? Because this would be kind of awkward trying to do.
Actually, you can attach a keyboard to it.
So you have keyboards attached?
Yeah, we're processing for sure.
All right.
You have that ability, yes?
One actually really cool element of the iPad is you can click the little microphone button on it, and you see the keyboard, and it will convert whatever you say into text, and you can talk as fast as you want, and it keeps up, and does periods, and does.
And you don't have to train it?
Like a dragon dictation?
You don't have to train it?
No.
Because a lot of voice activation, you have to train it.
It doesn't require any training.
Wow.
Wow.
Can students access this from home?
Yeah, um, if they have a device.
If they have a device.
Yeah. Yeah, and the.
Yes, yes.
Well, one of the apps I've been using in my classroom, we started a novel study, and we're reading Bridge to Terabithia, and in the olden days, I would go up to my storage boxes, hold all of my Bridge to Terabithia books, hand them out, and lecture the kids about not writing in their books. But with, with the Kindle app, I've been able to, I've been able to show the kids the text and mirror it, and mirroring is using the Apple TV and, like you've been seeing, having all the texts available for them to see, and it allows a lot of collaboration for them and us, a lot more discussions, I've noticed. And so we were looking at Bridge to Terabithia, and one of the things that we've been doing is looking at some of the vocab and working on context clues, and using that to figure out the meaning of the words, so you can do a lot of highlighting in this app, and so we highlighted the word reassessing, and so we talked about what we thought it might mean, and the kids were able to talk about it, and then one of the cool features of this app, if you click on it, it brings up a dictionary, so that we're able to check and see where we write about what we thought, and do we need to go back and look where did we go wrong. Another thing that we do a lot is, we highlight a lot of sections, and I'll pass around the iPad, and we were talking about a particular time when Blessing and Jess were talking, and what happened, and so they can also, you see the little blue kind of sticky note like you saw in Showbie, they can add sticky notes, so they would then talk in their group about maybe that paragraph, what they were thinking, obviously, they would write more than Jess, this makes me wonder, but they would do that, and then we could mirror it and see what each group was talking about, what they discussed. So those are just a few key features that we've been using with this novel group and this app, so, thank you.
Danielle, will you explain what mirroring means, when you say mirroring it?
Mirroring just means that you are showing exactly what's on your screen, being able to project it through the projector up so they can see it. Helen, the other thing that we do too, so the kids have iPads, so Andy could go ahead and take over the Apple TV, and he could mirror it from there and share what he's been looking at, so as long as you're connected to the same network, yeah, you can use the same Apple TV and project up what you're working on.
It's nice to give different groups a chance to share their thinking with everybody. You know, our vision is a paperless classroom, we're getting close to a paperless classroom. There's things still to work out, and some growing pains to be had with the kids, but we're loving it. I'm loving it, the kids are loving it. You know, I don't know if you have kids in school, you ever seen a notebook like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a lot of kids in my school, classes here with organizational problems, and this really seems to help, because you can make. really seems to help, because you can make individual folders in here for them and keep all the papers in there.
My notebooks still look like that.
Yeah, so does mine. That is mine. Thank you.
I had a quick question. No, first of all, it's very impressive. I think that's wonderful. The kids that don't have home devices, how does that work for you guys? Are they allowed to, like, check them out sometimes, or do none of them go home, or is it mostly in that?
Right now, they don't go home. Uh, I don't know if, you know, of course, we'd love to see that. We'd love to see one, one-to-one, and be able to have that checkout feature. Um, we have, we know we have kids without internet access, and so going totally paperless probably won't happen, but I know we can shortcut down the use of each other. I'll be brainstorming on that, though. I, I just, I have a vision, and I know there's a way to make it happen.
Yeah, it's nice in.
Have it figured out.
Yeah, nice in theory. It's wonderful that everybody would have it.
Nice in theory, but I'm working on it.
Yeah, no, obviously.
Is this the first year you've used these?
Um, yes.
Kind of follow-on question. Do you have a feel of how long these will last within your classroom?
Well, battery life, you know, goes down.
I mean, I mean the functionality of the tool.
Oh, there's always probably, you mean, this tool or the app?
For the tool. For, with this being used with a bunch of kids in a classroom environment.
Oh.
Will it last one year, two years, three years?
Oh, I think much longer. Accidents happen, yes, I realize that. Protection, you know, with the cases.
That'll be, that'll be good to understand down the road.
Well, they've been out for four years. They just had, the iPad just had their fourth anniversary, and they're still four years down there, still using the same ones.
The same physical ones? Okay.
So they're actually.
Good, that's great.
For four years.
That's good.
And you think the life of textbooks and those sorts of things.
Yeah, this reminds me of what I, um, I just recently went to Verizon and said, and guys got a new iPhone for our account. Sat there, conversed with the guy, he had a tablet with him. Typed in our phone number, got all, all my account information, asked me a few password questions, got the phone, scanned it in with this one device, did everything, just standing there. Said, oh, does I get receipt for that? Yeah, I'll email it to you. Done. He did all with one device. Pretty, it was pretty impressive. And it, and it really brought to mind something, um, I read The Economist a few months back, that the world is rapidly dividing into two groups of people. Those that can operate technical devices, complicated devices, and those that are gonna be replaced by them. We need to get as many kids as we can. And I, and we see that all around us.
And they're such a huge mo, the kids are so much more motivated when you put a screen in front of them.
That was, that was my question, is do the kids stay engaged longer and quicker? Yeah, I would assume so.
Your comment, you have to be accelerating here in the next decade for sure.
Right.
Well, and, and you know, I, you know, and I just, I saw an action here, I saw an action at the Verizon store the other day, you know, it's just, it's like, wow, there it is. He emailed me, I can do with it as I wish.
Well, any tablet, whether it's an iPad or anything else that's streamlined in the classroom, you've seen smart boards, this does almost everything that a smart board can do, and also the document cameras. You can set it up at your document desk. You've just eliminated two really almost practical, real practical tools in the classroom with a tablet device.
I think we do our kids a disservice if we don't get them on board, for sure.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much, you guys. It was really good.
Very, very interesting.
So I left a packet with you at the very beginning. I was wondering if you started to save all the time. I'm not gonna go over the front page, there's just stuff that you can look at here, leisure, unless you have a question. And then on the second page, there's some information about our vision to become a STEM school. It was on the theory, I wrote most of this on December 9th, about just hours before our water pipe broke. We were supposed to be back in school that night. And then our water pipe broke about 2:30 in the afternoon, and it was merciful and let me not come to the board meeting. But I had to revise it then and say that we have this feeling, we want to get a STEM lab to have STEM lab, which is pretty exciting. But it's been, it's been a very stressful process getting from pipe break to now. But these are the things that we've got going in school right now, and the things that we're wanting to do. The one bullet down there talks about working towards paperless classrooms, just through handheld devices. We've made a decision as a school not to replace our desktop computer lab, that, that desktop computer labs are actually obsolete, and now we have this opportunity to replace it, which we couldn't have done for years without this, um, opportunity that presented itself. And so, um, we probably are going to be able to buy enough iPads with our insurance money to give one-to-one devices to both Helen and Daniel in their classrooms, and have another classroom set that'll be put in a mobile cart that'll be shared by the other. So we'll still have, like, the capacity of a computer lab, a mobile, one mobile cart for the other teachers to, to share, check out, like, they should check out the computer lab. Our, our biggest, our most important issue right now is to get them all ordered and set up in time for testing, start testing middle to end of February. And we know that the full-size iPads have been approved for both Oaks testing and SBAP testing, but it's the full size that we have to buy for that. And we have to buy quartered keyboards to go with them, because the issue in classrooms with the, with the Bluetooth keyboards is that the Bluetooth keyboards don't know which device to sync to, and they get all mixed up. And so we have to put quartered keyboards on for testing purposes, so that they're specific to the device the child's working on.
That was my question. I just wrote, wrote that down. You can use the iPads for, for state testing then?
Yes. But it has to be the full size.
Yeah.
That's great. It's a better utilization of your equipment and more efficient use of your space, and a lot of benefits by doing it the way you're going.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about it. A lot, a little bit scared too, because it's, it's a whole lot to jump into without a whole lot of planning, because we expected to have a bit of time to plan this and design it. So we're basically designing it and building it and going forward really quickly. Well, we are going to continue to do some fundraising. I, I have marked on here, we have a golf tournament fundraiser planned for Saturday, June 21st. I would invite all of you who are golfers to join us. Two seniors, well, they're juniors right now, Dustin Meyer and Kira Ha, who are doing that, as there's some new projects to run. And those funds will be devoted to STEM, STEM projects. And then I, at the very end, they talk about the South Metro Silverstone Education Partnership, which our district joined thanks to Andy last fall. And that, that was a real lesson for us to be a part of that consortium, doing what's going on with us, because there are a lot of resources available to all of us through that consortium. And on the very, let's see, the third page, there's some more information about the South Metro Silverstone Partnership. You can look at that at your leisure, because I put the, the link there to their website. There's a lot of information on their website to get more. You have any questions about any of that? Okay, now I'm gonna show you, um, this is a short presentation from our school before Okay, so we're gonna start over. Okay, let's start again with the volume thing.
Thank you for buying great insurance. So we can replace our classroom. Replace our computer lab. We love our new STEM lab.
Okay, so we'll talk now about the homeless program. On the back of the second page, this is data I showed you last week when we had homeless happening this spring, and so it's too early in the year to have a count for this year. You can see that our numbers went up dramatically about three years ago, and they began to come down. I think that's a trend statewide. It's an encouraging trend, and it also is indicative of recession, hopefully, a trend that will continue in terms of our economics as a state. As the administrator of the homeless recovery line, participating with the community group in a poverty simulation training, I think you, I think Andy presented that to you last week, or, yeah, last month at the school, where Vinnie, Andy, and David have been also involved in that. Our school district is a part with other groups. If you look in the very back page, there's a flyer about that. It talks about the community partners that had joined us at the time we wrote the grant to our philanthropies foundations that funded a large portion of this activity. But there are other organizations beginning to join us now, so there will still be others joining us. If a partner doesn't mean people contributed funds, we didn't ask people for funds, we asked them for their help in planning and problem solving. So, um, the event is actually on February 25th. I would encourage and invite all of you to attend. Uh, I think if you want to attend, you can register through David. Um, we're, we're gonna take the, we have homeless building liaisons in every school district, and our Title I fund will pay for subs for those liaisons to be freed up on that day to attend the training. And I believe a number of our administrators will also be attending. The same thing is true in the Mandels School District, Mandels is also participating in this. So you have any questions about that? Okay, that's it.
Can we talk about your donuts?
I don't know. Stop talking longer.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thanks very much.
I think I feel pretty safe not buying donuts.
Yeah, I think you're probably good.
It's a pretty tough act to follow, I think. I think it's the green sheet that I, I placed out there before, so for Evergreen Elementary. Just some fast bags up on top, enrollment 73, um, and then the class sizes there. Uh, the biggest one, obviously on the sheet, is kindergarten, which a kindergarten class of 13 is not big. But at Evergreen, by the time you get to third grade, third, fourth, and fifth, combined with other ones, you know, that could be a big deal. That was a bit of a surprise, um, from what I'm told. But, you know, if the other ones coming in aren't, aren't that big, it shouldn't be that big of a deal. Academically, Evergreen just continues to excel. You can see the, uh, state scores down below. And that, I think, is just a testament to a great staff and a very involved community that cares a lot about their school, and that's something I've been seeing a lot. It's actually been a joy to, to see that occur. Something new at Evergreen is the Physical Education Expansion Grant that Linda Myers and I kind of went in together with. Uh, so we hired a PE teacher who's at, at Victor Point for three days, and then at Evergreen for two. And so the kids there get PE every day anyway, because the regular classroom teachers do PE, uh, but it is kind of a step up in terms of physical activity, which I think especially in this day and age, you know, talking about iPads and kids being mesmerized by screens, uh, it's also still good to do the old-fashioned thing of get them outside and work them pretty hard. So that's been a good, positive thing for our school, to have a certified PE teacher working our kids out pretty good. A couple of things that actually related to technology. We got 25 new laptops donated, um, by the work of a very persuasive, uh, parent club member, uh, who, she doesn't want me to say her name, but she's very persuasive. And so we got 25, 25 new laptops for free, which will put us in a good spot, because some of our laptops and computers were getting a little bit old. So that was a very good thing. And then getting ready for testing next year, uh, we also made sure that down to first and second grade, kids are doing keyboarding, um, so they know how to type, because the state, the testing coming up in the future, uh, third graders have to know how to type their responses, and so, um, it's gonna take them a long time when they're hunting and pecking. So our focus on technology is as good as we can make it, you know, for, uh, the funds that we have. Uh, the recently completed projects and activities is kind of similar to what you've heard from everybody else. Really good fall cleanup day. Uh, EPTC purchased new whiteboards for, um, to replace all the whiteboards in the school, which was, as a teacher, it sounds like a little thing, but it's a meaningful gift from our parent club, because that is something that you use constantly. Our annual Pi Social fundraiser was a big success. Uh, Thanksgiving Day Feast, I snuck away from the high school for a little bit to go to our Thanksgiving feast, and I think that was probably the biggest one I've ever seen. And I didn't wanna go back to the high school afterwards, because I ate very well. Everybody dressed up, and it was, it was a lot of fun. And then we just got done with our Christmas program in December, and, uh, from watching all those rehearsals at the beginning to the final product was, was really good. And a neat thing about Evergreen is that, you know, during the Christmas program, you had generations of, um, alumni from Evergreen there, even some that didn't have kids that were in the production. They were coming back because they care so much about the school, which is really neat to see. Something in the works right now that is a pretty neat thing, and I know some of you probably knew her, Pat Hayskamp, who was a employee in the district for, I think, 36 years. I didn't get that confirmed, but that was what I had researched a little bit. Michelle Buckley, our kindergarten teacher, um, with her kids and a lot of other kids in the school, are putting together a memorial, kind of a tile mosaic, um, that they're gonna put on the outside wall in the recovered area. And so all the kids are making individual tiles, and then they're getting, you know, a bunch of stuff donated, and they're gonna put a memorial out there, because she worked out at Evergreen a little bit, um, in her last couple of years, doing art stuff. And so it's, it's really neat to see all the kids kind of coming together to do a project like that, um, in memory of Pat. A couple of highlights for me, this being a new position and still teaching at the high school. My kids go to Victor Point, so I'm getting used to the K-8 environment, but just being there, seeing that environment, um, I know I've heard, I've heard you guys talk a lot about, the great thing about Silver Falls is parents get a lot of choice with where the kids get to go to school. And, um, seeing that firsthand as a principal has been, has been a real joy. There's great teachers at Evergreen, really good classified staff, and, and that parent involvement and that ownership of the school is something that I think is, um, is very unique. And I think my test, and it's a subjective, personal test, but if my kids weren't already at a great school like Victor Point, I would put them at Evergreen in a second. As a parent, that's the best test I can come up with. And the last thing on there is obviously the, the Oaks results, and, you know, it's not all about the numbers. I think it's a lot about, uh, the community and the feel of it, but you can't argue with those numbers about how they're, how they're doing. Evergreen was rated in the top 10% for schools in Oregon, I think, for a good reason. And I just think that's a testament to the quality of the staff and, and the community out there. And it's been a lot of fun for me. It's been busy for me, being at the high school, teaching, and at Evergreen, being principal, but it's been a very valuable experience and, um, seeing those kids do really well. My goal is to be quick and not pay for donuts. My goal is to be quick and not pay for donuts.
Any questions for Brett? We could keep him up here longer, so he
No, you don't.
Okay, thank you very much, Brett. Good job.
Very good research.
And thank you for splitting your time between the high school and Evergreen. Okay, any board reports tonight? Does anybody have anything? Very quickly, I was able to, way back before Christmas, seems like a long time ago, I was able to stop in at Pratom. And it's always fun to go out there. Great, great little school. Mrs. Bukite's class was working on all sorts of different projects, and it's fun to mess around with those kids a little bit. The upper grades were going to PE, and they have a PE teacher at Pratom now, too, that they, they were able to hire just like .15 or something like that. But they were, the upper grades, 6, 7, they were playing dodgeball, so I didn't stay in that gym very long. It was a little scary. But the middle room, they were the ones who we got the letters from thanking us for the math textbooks. And some of them even, you know, came up and thanked me. Thank you for our textbooks. And they were working on some of the math stuff when I was there. And really, I was amazed how hard the level that those kids were at and the stuff that they were learning. It was, it was really cool to see. And they were getting it. They were getting it. It was, you know, they were having to think through things and problems solve. And so it was really neat to see. And Mrs. Freyoff told me that, you know, they were getting this stuff. It was kind of a struggle at times and getting used to the new curriculum and everything, but they were really glad to have that. So that was good to see. And also, I was able to get down to Eugene Field one morning. It happened to be the morning they had a lockdown. So the, it was, you could tell by, you know, tan-ish, kids were getting pretty squarely and not being able to get out to recess and things. But always so much fun to go down there. There's, the staff does an awesome job down there from, you know, the special ed classes, Mr. Johnson's class. And, but all of them do. They just, they care so much about those kids. And I, you know, I know we've heard a lot about the issues at Eugene Field and some of the things that hold them back a little bit. And I told some of the teachers that, you know, in a way, they're their worst enemies because they do such an awesome job of teaching those kids and getting those kids, making those kids successful that it kind of, people don't see the problems that come along with that old building. So always fun to go down there. Really great staff. And the, excuse me. Mrs. Miller is here tonight. She, she just wrote a little note to Andy saying she was gonna be here. And I know she's speaking for the other teachers, and she, they want to invite, you know, to remind us and invite any board members to come down there